Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 30th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I have the dog for today. Uh-oh, we're going for a walk. Or a run. I can't run anymore. I do good to walk. This is our pet cat from the Lorraine County Dog Kennel today. She is choking because I'm pulling on her. Come here. Can you sit? Can you sit? You know that? No. Can you sit? Sit. Sit, sit. Sit!
Dog listens like your kids, Betty.
And my fellow Commissioners. Can you sit? Sit. Oh, she says, "I don't want to sit." This is a stray that was found in North Ridgeville. Female. She's available for adoption on Saturday. Looks like she just needs a good home. If you'd be interested in adopting her, she's available on Saturday at our Lorraine County Dog Kennel. If you don't particularly care for this dog, we have others available. You can see them at the kennel or you can visit our website. She was. We have a cat at our house named Charlie and she's a female. Dig that. A thought for today?
Hold on, some...
I'm sorry?
He's messing up our system.
Yeah, it's on up there. We don't need to see ourselves.
Yeah, fine. Dystrexia sometimes.
Oh, here we go. Okay. Alrighty. All set to go? Our thought for today? "I am defeated and I know it if I meet any human being from whom I find myself unable to learn anything." That's a bit wordy, but the message is you can learn something from anybody. Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, we'll have a discussion on stormwater under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Are the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the jurisdictions of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a couple issues with regards to ongoing contract negotiations specifically with the Teamsters, one or two quick issues with the steelworkers, and a potential new hires, maybe in job and family services. And then I want to update you as to the hires that we want for summer youth. All of those topics are allowed for executive session under Sunshine Law, so it asks that we go into executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today to have those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve my reading of the Commissioners' meeting minutes of June 23, 2010?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children and Family, approve an enter in FY 11 Help Me Grow Part C agreement with the Ohio Department of Health and the amount of $289,347 effective July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we want to open this up for any discussion? I got a phone call this morning, my voicemail right before I came in here, from Linda Moore.
I believe the ladies from the Lurie City Health Department, et cetera, are here regarding item number 13.
Oh, not this one?
Is that correct, Kathy? Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Admit various resolutions for Help Me Grow contracts for reallocations for fiscal year 10. Resolution 09576 adopted August 19, 2009, Lorraine City Health Department from $201,298 to $219,298. Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities from $79,307.28 to $74,207.28. Resolution 10165 adopted March 10, 2010, Catholic Charity Service Corp. from $271,280.76 to $276,280.76. Illyria City Health Department from $311,470.9 to $329,470.9. And Neighborhood House Association from $410,282.35 to $385,282.35.
Before I make my motion, I'd just like to point out that Teresa does such a great job for us, but I think she thought we should have a little humor today.
Did you like that?
It's "Help me grow," not "Help me grow." Also moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an entry in various contracts for fiscal year 11 Help Me Grow effective July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011. Catholic Charity Service Corp. in the amount of $527,373 and Neighborhood House Association in the amount of $552,854. And then approve an entry in transitional contract extensions for fiscal year 10 effective July 1, 2010 through September 30, 2010. Illyria City Health Department in the amount of $78,757.20 and Lorraine City Health Department in the amount of $63,720.
Melissa Stefano is the Director of our Lorraine County Children and Families Council. Melissa, would you first like to address this issue? There'll be some discussion regarding saying...
I just want to start off by saying we put out an RFP and was in receipt of three proposals. Just to give you a little quick historical review, one was from Illyria City Health Department, we had a proposal from Neighborhood House Association, and we also had a proposal from Catholic Charities here in Lorraine County. And all three proposals, actually all three entities are incumbent providers for Help Me Grow services in Lorraine County. Probably historically, the longest-held provider in Lorraine County is Illyria City Health Department. It's been a good marriage with them, I guess, for the past 10 years. They have received a Help Me Grow contract to provide Help Me Grow services in Lorraine County. And so, basically, when the state approved their last biting in budget, we took a 30% cost reduction or reduction in our funding for Help Me Grow. And they really termed this year as well as last year a transition year for Help Me Grow because there's a lot of changes, both policy and program changes taking place in the Help Me Grow program across the state. Really, it's not uncommon for counties, our neighboring county, Cuyahoga County, for example, Lucas County, are cutting back the number of providers that they have awards out to for Help Me Grow services. And so, for the past couple of years, we've talked about reducing the number of vendors that we have to bring efficiency in programming. So this is something that we've had in the plans for the last couple of years, our incumbent providers were aware of this. This year, we decided in our RFP process to award contracts to two providers, and so we came back with three providers who submitted application. And so, we had a review process that took place. We had an external team review proposals, and we also had an internal team. And then, we averaged those scores out, so for a total of reviewers, we had 12. I guess, my thoughts are, all of these incumbent providers, really outreach in the community and probably to have completely had an unbiased review, we probably would have had people maybe recruited from Southeast Ohio to come up and review. So, I think the review process went well. We had comments, both strengths and weaknesses identified in the proposals. And we're fortunate to have had quarterly reviews, quarterly performance reviews on all the providers. And so, we use that data and we captured that data in our internal review process to help identify strong proposals. Based on that review process and, I guess, coupled with the fact that, you know, we had taken a 30% cut in funding, we wanted to bring efficiency to programming. And so, we are doing that. My Help Me Grow Administration recommended that we fully fund Neighborhood House Association and Catholic Charities who had the two highest scores, cumulative scores, as well as the lowest unit rate, based on our review practice. And so, and then to allow for some transition contracts because we know that we have over 700 children in Help Me Grow. And for those vendors not selected, which would be Illyria City and Lorraine City, we would have to provide dollars to support a transitional contract to them. And so, that's what we presented here today, is to fully fund Neighborhood House and Catholic Charities and provide transitional contracts to the two house departments.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions from the Commissioners?
Melissa, this is based on, when you're saying lowest unit rates, what's the difference between the two that are on the agenda to be awarded and the two who weren't? When you talk about, what's the difference in percentages?
Catholic Charities had a requested amount of $528,689. Their unit rate was 40.79, and this was a drop in unit rate because during our review process of the proposals, we're required to review all expenses to make sure that, you know, we receive RFP funding and we also receive Part C funding as well as state GRF funding. So we have to make sure that the expenses are allowable. The way that Catholic Charities presented their budget initially was that they had some allowable, unallowable costs. And so, they redrafted their budget and their budget came in at, their unit rate came in at 40.79.
Forty dollars and 79 cents per?
Per unit hour.
Okay.
Illyria City Health Department presented a budget of $592,647 with a unit rate of And the Neighborhood House Association requested amount was $557,516 at a unit rate of $39.71. And, you know, the cost difference, when you're thinking of unit rate, which is equal to one hour of service, you know, we look at contracts and the difference between, say, Catholic Charities and Illyria City is the range of about $60,000. So, when we're trying to build efficiency in a program, it comes down to a dollar-sense approach. And, you know, I was just in a state meeting last week and they're estimating possibly an $8 million hole in the state's next biting in budget. So, we do anticipate, you know, we do anticipate future funding cuts to this program. And so, you know, our focus going forward is to build a program with good service, you know, has great quality and is efficient model, so.
Other questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Melissa. Comments, questions from the audience? Please come to the microphone, Kathy.
Good to be on TV, Catherine. You get to be on TV.
I'm sure you'll identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Catherine Borland. I'm the Health Commissioner for the City of Illyria and a citizen of Lorraine County, taxpayer. The Illyria City Health District has provided Help Me Grow services to the children of Lorraine County for 13 years, since the inception of that program and through its evolution. Evaluations by the Children and Family Council have been positive. Quotas have been met. Customer satisfaction has been consistent. Funding has been effectively and predictably used. Based on the decision of the funding agency for Help Me Grow, the county commissioners, you all, the county, the RFP to which we responded, reduced providers from the current four, I'm going to be repeating some of what Melissa said, from the current four agencies to two agencies. The RFP that we submitted complied with every point in the proposal and did so at the unit cost of $42.21. I had written, "That is less than one of the applicants and slightly more than the other." We're hearing for the first time that people who submitted budgets, and I'm not in the building or where people submit budgets frequently to you all for making decisions, I was not aware that they got a phone call and got to resubmit their budget so that it came out lower than someone else. And apparently, that's what happened. They were able to resubmit. We were not aware of that, so. Is this a question of funding that I ask? And then why would our unit cost projected, our projection, and the amount of money, you heard of $500,000? We asked for the most money because we followed the rules. They said they wanted us to do X number of clients, and that was in the RFP. We had to do X number of clients, and when you multiply that out by our unit cost, the $42.21, which at that time was the second lowest, not the highest, we asked for more money. That's how it multiplied out. And of course, all of this is dependent on the number of clients that are available in the community. We all knew that. Okay. So is this a question of funding? Is this a question of quality? Then why would the excellent record of service provision be rejected? What aspects of the provision of service by ECHD has been so quality? What part of us has been inefficient? Is this a question of rejection of public health nurse providers of this service? Then why would the very excellent recommendations and support letters from Lorraine County professionals apparently be ignored? And what about the research that has been done by David Olds and others that has repeatedly validated public health nurse provision of services to families at risk? The investment by this body in the children of Lorraine County is one of the most important investments you will make in the future of this county. The reasons behind this decision must be very clear, point by point. There must be full disclosure that defends this decision. The children of Lorraine County deserve no less. I would hope that the families who have been served by public health nurses would be privy to such a disclosure. They and all the citizens of Lorraine County have a right to understand, as do we, the full rationale behind this decision.
Before you come up and say anything, can somebody respond to the fact that these other, somebody had an opportunity to resubmit? Can you answer that question?
Historically, this request for proposal process has allowed the resubmission of budgets when we see an unallowable expense. So, for example, in the case of Catholic Charities, we have a cap on administrative cost, and their administrative cost was reflected in two different areas of their budget. And so, we noted that and allowed them to re-present their budget with removal of that extended cap. And we've historically done that because this is a request for proposal process to allow all agencies the ability to resubmit their budget if there's unallowable costs associated with that budget, and this was the case.
That was the only part that was changed in their submittal?
Correct. And then, during the review process, the reviewers did note that they did incorrectly present their budget in that aspect, so they received a reduced score, a reduced mark on that component of the review.
What you're saying is that the City of Illyria did not have any unallowable?
Correct. Illyria City's budget is probably 100%, maybe 99% personnel cost. We were actually very pleased to see that Illyria City donated in kind their administrative overhead associated with running that program. And so, within their budget, they, for the first time that I've heard of in Lorraine County, they've actually sort of partnered with Lorraine City Health Department and were going to subcontract with Lorraine City Health Department to have nursing staff brought on. It was my understanding under proposal that they would be the fiscal administrative agent of the Help Me Grow dollars, but they would just subcontract with Lorraine City for the nursing staff. But aside from the fact that they didn't have any administrative cost, their full dollar amount requested is still $40,000 to $60,000 over the two other agencies who did include administrative costs within their budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Kathy.
I'm W. Moraga. I'm a service coordinator and a clinical supervisor for Help Me Grow in Illyria City. Not to duplicate some of what Melissa and Kathy has already said, but going into the RFP process, we were told that the main reason they were going down to two vendors was to decrease the administrative overhead cost out of the agencies. Hence, we went in with zero administrative cost. The two agencies that have gone in and gotten the proposal have put in over $100,000 a piece of overhead costs from what we saw of the original proposals. Now, of course, those proposals have probably been changed. And it's my understanding that the evaluation tool was used to evaluate the proposals and they were called back for a second time to re, once they made the recommendation, to come back and re-discuss what the recommendations were. Three people of the original committee were not able to attend that second meeting. So the, and the question is, why were they brought back in? And was the answer the same from one committee reading to the second committee reading? We have had positive responses from our families, from our audits, from everybody else, and we, at the time, we went in for our unit, we were lower than an agency that was currently providing, was currently correct or awarded. So if the decision wasn't made on the least expensive, on the, as valuable as somebody else is qualified and as what the committee recommended, then who made the recommendation and how did the committee come to that decision? Or how did council come to the decision?
Thank you, Debbie.
My name's Linda Moore. I'm the Director of Nursing for the Illyria City Health District. I'm surprised and disappointed with the decision made to eliminate the Illyria City Health District from the Help Me Grow, as a Help Me Grow provider. The nurses in our agency providing this service have proven to be very important in the lives of so many families, especially those with the medically fragile children. These parents are struggling with the frustrations of getting appropriate health care and services for their child at a time when they are most distraught and don't know who to turn to. The knowledge and the experience the nurses have of normal versus abnormal development in children allows them the benefit of being able to provide assessments in the home to determine if a delay in development is suspected, thus making sure that a child receives intervention services as soon as possible. We keep hearing that the nurses are too expensive to provide the service coordination for Help Me Grow. However, in our budget proposal, Illyria City's unit rate proposal was lower until we heard otherwise from Melissa. I believe that the families being served by the nurses receive a service that is worth every penny of what that child deserves. I've been the Director of Nursing for this agency now for 19 years. The quality of the nurses providing the Help Me Grow services to families of Lorraine County is exceptional. Their experience with children, especially children with developmental delays and medical conditions, the nurses' knowledge of resources in the community, and their compassion and drive to see that these children receive all the services that they deserve is above and beyond just a job to them. They truly engulf these families in their care and serve as advocates in every aspect of health and educational-related issues for these families. I would urge you to take the time to review this decision and determine how it was made. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Do you have any further comments, Melissa?
I do. I just want to comment again about building efficiency in the program. We did talk about, one of the ways to do that was to reduce the administrative overhead associated with running the program. And with Illyria City's, I guess, in-kind donation of their administrative overhead to the program, we did note that, and that was a strength in their proposal, as well as, I guess, we were pleased to see that they did elect to bring on Lorraine City Health Department nurses. But one thing that we know is that the state does not require a registered nurse to be a service coordinator. In fact, the Help Me Grow, like I said before, is going through a transition process. They're going to be moving from the Ohio Department of Health to the Ohio Department of Education within the next year and a half, 18 months. And with that comes a really strong focus on home visiting. And, in fact, the state just recently developed a whole new home visiting model that they're going to be putting in place in a couple weeks. And to be a home visitor, you only need, say, an associate's degree. We have 16 service coordinators in Lorraine County, 14 of those have above and beyond that, they have a bachelor's degree. And so, while they may not be a registered nurse with a bachelor's degree, they could be someone who had majored in early childhood education or who is a social worker. So fortunately for us, all of our service coordinators go through a very intensive training practice down in Columbus, and they are certified as service coordinators or home visitors. And so, really, when we're looking at the variance in staffing, we're looking at the average cost to have a health department service coordinator at about $70,000 compared to someone at, say, Neighborhood House who has an early childhood ed degree with their average cost about $45,000. So, again, in building efficiency in this model and moving forward with anticipation of future cuts and possibly the removal of RFP funding, which is about $219,000 for us, we really have to rely on having comparable service and building efficiency.
Thank you, Melissa. Commissioners, you have any comments or questions?
Well, with the cuts, are we still going to be able to provide the services to the same amount of children as we have in the past?
Yes, all of the providers that presented a proposal to us, all of them wrote their contracts based on having one full-time clinical supervisor and nine service coordinators. And with that, we are actually going to be able to serve all of our current caseload with the anticipation, with the efficiency in this model, to even broaden that service. So, we will be serving the same amount. And I do say that, in all fairness, if it would have been Neighborhood House or Catholic Charities that would be receiving just a transitional, they would be able to cite all the same positives to their program. We do look at program quality. We do an annual satisfaction survey. All those satisfaction surveys come back with very positive remarks from all agencies that we have. And so, along with Illyria City and the reference to having support letters, the other agencies had just as equally support letters within the community of their services and the program quality. I do want to say this was a difficult decision because, like I said, as Kathy noted, that, you know, they've been a part of this program for 13 years. And so, it was a difficult decision moving forward, but I feel confident that we have two great providers and I think that we can have a good program moving forward.
Thank you, Melissa. Kathy, you have further comment?
I have another question. Again, I've never bid on a job, and I thought, once you put your bid in, whatever the reason the reader saw, that the other bidders would be notified. This roofing company is going to give us a new per-unit cost, and so we thought we'd let you know that, that they have, we've looked and they're going to give a new unit cost, and it's probably, it may be lower than what you've put in. So, you might want to know about that. I don't know what the legalities, what the procedure, the policy, the protocol is for that, but I would question our not being notified about that possibility of reducing the unit cost.
I referred to Jerry Ennis. Is there an issue legally with the fact that they had the opportunity to resubmit?
Well, if I understand it correctly, what they're saying is they just disallowed some of the costs. You don't get... You know, you don't get, I, I mean, Kathy, are you saying you would have resubmitted a whole lower?
If, yes. We would, we could, absolutely, we would have taken a look at it. Whether or not we would have, and it's not funny, it's real.
You should control yourself.
No, I just said it's not funny.
Okay, the, 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 uh, it wasn't a sealed bid. It was a request for proposal. You've been doing this job long enough. You know the difference between a request for proposal and a sealed bid. What I heard Melissa indicate was that there was a discrepancy, and they notified them of the disallowed cost. They did not, in essence, change their submitted material. That line item was crossed out as an allowable cost. Now, I asked Melissa to come to the podium and indicate whether that's accurate or not. Because you have indicated they got to change their numbers. I don't believe that's an accurate statement.
Well, what happened was that in, in disallowing that, their costs became lower.
Well, but they, they did not submit new information. They were not given an opportunity to resubmit their bid. You notified them of a disallowed cost. Is that accurate?
We allow, we notified them that their, the budget presented, uh, reflected dual administrative overhead in two sections of their budget. So, when they resubmitted their bid, they took out, I don't have their budget in front of me to cite exactly the dollar amount, but they took out whatever that dual cost was.
Was there any additional change to any numbers? And I think it's important, and I think Kathy should have an answer to that.
I agree. There was no change to additional numbers as far as their staffing cost. Their supply budget did not change.
It was just a duplicate up and administrative costs was removed from their RFP.
That, that is my understanding. I can, if you would like, I can go back and review that if that's...
Which in essence lowered their cost.
Correct.
Okay, right.
So as it stands right now, Catholic Charities and Neighborhood House has the lowest per-hour contract price.
Unit rate.
Correct.
Any problem with that, Jerry?
No, I don't, uh, again, as Jim is indicating, it would be a different story if you had somebody coming back and changing their numbers and lowering their numbers. At this point, what happened is, we basically said, "We're disallowing this. Do you still want to go forward with your, you know, keep your proposal in there despite the fact that we're eliminating those costs?"
And the bidders said yes.
Right.
Okay, so we all understand the process?
Correct.
Okay. Um, do you understand what transpired then?
Yeah, I, I, I heard the explanation.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
I guess there's just, uh, you know, how do you cut thirty percent? I mean, we have to do something, and I, I don't know if they're, this is the best way of doing it. It seems like we're cutting fifty percent of the vendors out with thirty percent of a, a cut. So, can you explain that?
Um, we're cutting fifty percent because we only had, uh, we didn't receive, uh, a proposal from Lorain City Health Department. We received a proposal from Elaria City Health Department. Um, it just so happened that Elaria City is going to contract with Lorain City. So, in essence, we are reducing by fifty percent in this, in this aspect.
With regard to the, to the cuts, um, first of all, the hel, the Elaria Health Department has done a good job. There's no doubt about that. So, I, I don't think that that's really in question. Um, and most, with the changes in the state over the last couple of years, uh, all of the organizations in Lorain County that were providing Help Me Grow have stepped up their game. And they have done a much better job, uh, and I would say, in some respects, an excellent job, uh, responding to, uh, challenges that have presented to us, whether it be redefining criteria of success or limiting the funding. Uh, one of the issues we find ourselves on is a continued squeeze of the dollar. And with the reduction of dollars comes a reduction in our administrative dollars to be able to manage the program. When we speak to the administrative burden, now, as part, and I say part, not, not the whole, of some of the changes, it's a consolidation. We have four organizations out there doing the same job. And, 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 and that doesn't really make a lot of sense in this day and age. And so, as we try to contract, we had five a few years ago. And a few years ago, we had territories where people, we tried to gerrymander them through. And we've been trying to move to a more efficient model. Uh, I don't, I don't know from, from, um, whether one agency is superior to the other. They all do a good job. Uh, it was, it was, it's a balancing act. And I sent Melissa back three times to look at this on the recommendations and have talks with people, because it was that close. It was, it was, it was that challenging, uh, because when you have to, you don't, you, when you want to go down to less and everybody's fairly comparable, how do you get to less without alienating somebody? This could be any other group in here saying the very same things if they were not on the other side of the equation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I don't want any, you know, to leave any taste that the, the Health Department hasn't done a good job. They did. I had calls from the boards, uh, board members of the Health Department when they were going to submit a combined proposal. And I actually was very excited about that because seeing Elaria and the Lorain Health Departments come together in a collaboration, I think, was, was a great undertaking. And I think it crossed some, uh, boundaries that, that, uh, uh, needed to be crossed. And so, their proposal was, was warmly welcomed, uh, for, for a combined renewal. Uh, that still doesn't accomplish the goal of getting us to less service providers. Um, the, so that, that is where we're, we're heading. Do you need to do that? I'm going to be honest with you. No, you don't. You could have three service providers. You could have five. I don't recommend one because that doesn't give us a backup should an agency suffer some difficulties in getting the job done. We can rapidly ramp the other agency and be able to extend their services. So I believe that gives us ample cover, um, with any problems down the road. And we have had agencies that have faltered before, and we've been able to shift the burden to others while we, we figured out what to do with, with, uh, with those problems. So you have a lot of options on the table. I think the Health Department's done a great job. I think Melissa's done a great job, uh, but there's just so much push and pull that can go into any, any situation, and that, that's where we find ourselves on, right now.
Well, how are you saying we can, we can still include them?
Well, we could.
We have the funds to include them?
Uh, you could have three service, three service coordinators. But again, everything that we're being told from efficiencies in government, everything that's being pounded on us is that we need to continue to consolidate services. And we're trying to do that in every area that we work in. Uh, we're, we're doing away with services when it doesn't make sense to be providing those services. We're, we're finding lowest-cost options by outsourcing services. And then we're taking duplication of services and trying to find efficient ways to limit those duplications and consolidate those things.
I understand all that, but if it doesn't cost any money to have three, why not have three?
It's, it's, it, there's three sets of reports, three sets of visits, three, you know, you gotta...
But it doesn't cost any money to have three.
It costs, it costs us the work.
Administrative cost. It costs us the administrative work.
And I, and I, and I'm not completely sure that having three different departments doing, having three different philosophical looks at what they're doing to be the, the, uh, in the best interest of the community. So we, and that's, so we're trying to get one programmatic look at what we're doing. But I don't want to not indicate to you that you don't have those options. Uh, so...
How many, uh, is this going to result in people losing their jobs at the Elaria Health Department?
Uh, we, we haven't asked that question because it's going to result in the same amount of money being put into the community. Uh, sometimes when you make changes, there's a shift in where the jobs are. Some are moved from here to there. Um, but, but, uh, we looked at it from a programmatic standpoint. The same amount of money and the same amount of services are going to be delivered from the, to the consumer. I also respect the fact that the Health Departments believe a public health nurse should be in the home with the family. Uh, I don't really give a lot of thinking to that. The state doesn't require that. There is a move underway with the shifting of the responsibilities, as Melissa indicated, uh, under, uh, the, I call it the Department of Education. But, uh, I, I don't know if I agree with that change either, but we just go with the flow. Those things are, those things are put, uh, down to us, and we're told that's the way it's going to be. And then I have very fine public health nurses in both organizations. Are they a little bit more costly? Yes. Are they better trained? Uh, they have a different training. I don't know what better for the type of services we're providing would be an adequate way of describing it. Uh, so these are all, these are all things, you can see, we can go on and on with all the things that we have to evaluate. Um, and I will say, this evaluation was sent back a number of times to be looked at because of how close everything was.
Well, I guess I don't understand. If, if we took it from two to three, would we just take this, the amount that we are, have allocated for the Catholic Charities, Neighborhood House, and divide it by, add those together and divide it by three rather than by two? How, how would that work?
Pretty much. Well, it would depend on the amount of, uh, consumers being, being served.
We, we have, uh, one point two, a little over one point two million budgeted for contracts. Um, so, um, if you fund, um, for example, the two, uh, Catholic Charities, Neighborhood House, you would have a remaining balance of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Um, and that was going to go toward in, uh, transitional contracts. But there is, if, I think your question was, Commissioner, is, uh, is there money enough to support three contracts? There would be enough money to support three contracts. Um, the anticipation was that Catholic Charities and Neighborhood House would have to hire staff. Um, if you did the three contracts, um, there may still have to be some hiring, um, but not as much, I guess.
The, the, uh, and I want to make sure that the board is clear that, 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 that option exists, but it, it doesn't take us where we're ultimately headed, which would be, um, one lead agency providing most of the services with another agency providing less services as a backup. Um, and of course, everybody understands the economy of scale. The, the more you do at one place, the, the more effective everything is consolidated. So, but, uh, I don't know that we've amply indicated to you that you could do a number of, of those options. I want to make sure that we're clear about that.
How many agencies do we have providing this service now?
We have four. Um, Lorain City Health Department, Elaria City Health Department, Catholic Charities, and Neighborhood House.
Okay.
And it, and, you know, if we funded Elaria City Health Department, it would be up to them if they still wanted to contract with Lorain City. That would be, uh, Lorain City didn't present a budget proposal to us, so that would be...
Because they were going to work with Elaria.
Correct. As a subcontractee.
And, and that was my understanding from members of the Lorain Health Department Board. Is that still accurate, Kathy? I wasn't sure. We hadn't had talk, that you were, you were, you were collaborating with Lorain, right?
Absolutely. It's in, it's in our proposal.
That's what, I haven't, I haven't seen the proposal. That's why I just asked.
The question being, Melissa, though, if we do split it up, how many less children are we going to serve? Or how are we going to handle any increased amount of services needed? And you've got a disparity of about, I don't know, seventy percent between the three vendors.
Right. Um, if you fund all three vendors, like I said, we would ha, we would have the opportunity. Um, right now, we have sixteen service coordinators, and that, um, meets our capacity for our caseload. Um, we do anticipate, actually, the state, um, I guess, last year, they tightened the eligibility criteria. So we lost fifty percent of our at-risk caseload this year. Um, they did broaden that a little bit with the new policies that will go in effect in a couple of weeks. So I do anticipate, um, a sort of a resurgence, I guess, or growth back in our at-risk caseload. So, um, we're estimating that we'll need within the county, um, at least sixteen to start, and then, uh, an increase up to twenty service coordinators. So, there will have to be some hiring within, uh, even, I think, within the, uh, the three. If we fund three, we'll still have to hi, have some hiring.
Let me, uh, I don't know if you caught that one. The, the state has, uh, done something rather unique. Rather than not serving people, they just raised the bar, uh, for what qualifies. And, and it's been, it's been terrible because people don't realize, and, and most of the community doesn't realize, that we're developing an underserved population. Uh, we simply say they don't qualify for services, but they used to qualify for services. Kathy's shaking her head on that, too. So, every time the state gives us a little less money, they say, "Okay, now, only these people qualify for services." So see, we're giving you adequate amount of funding for your program. When, essence, if you go back a few years, you'll see that we have a tremendously underserved population that we were serving just a few short years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And I cannot stress enough how important the Help Me Grow program is in to get a presence into these homes from zero to three. If you don't get them from zero to three, you can forget about the P-16. Everything else is going to pass on after that because we're, you've lost half of them, uh, before, before they, they even had a chance to succeed. And this program's that, that important.
Well, my concern being, though, if we had a thirty percent budget cut, and we split this up three ways, how many less people are going to be serviced?
Same.
Well, but...
Now, if you have different costs, it can't happen that way. You can't be forty-two, twenty-one at one, forty-one at another, and thirty-nine, seventy at another.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to lose service to people who are in need?
We will not lose service to people in need. Um, the budget cut happened at the beginning of the, of the biennium. And so, that's why we've lost fifty percent of our caseload for the at-risk population. Um, but the state awarded us enough dollars to meet the targets that we have, that they gave us in this county. And so, I anticipate that we won't, we'll be able to support that, those targets with the funding that we have, based on also the providers' budgets that we have in place.
I'm just looking at the fact that Elaria and Lorain collaborated and, and are working together to try to, to meet the needs of the people in this community. And if it's not going to cost us any additional dollars, I don't see why we wouldn't include them. I mean, it might be temporary, if, um, in fact, we're going to see more cuts in the future. But I think for right now, I think we should go with three providers. It's my opinion.
Is that your motion?
I would make that motion.
Mr. Cale? What's your position?
Well, I'm still discussing. Somebody's got a second for more discussion, I guess, if there's a motion made.
Second?
Discussion?
Yeah, again, I still don't understand, and again, no offense to anybody who were doing this. But how can we pay somebody forty-two bucks, another person forty-one dollars, another person thirty-nine dollars, and still serve the same amount of the population? That doesn't make any sense to me unless we've got an entire slush fund there,
Mm-hmm.
and they could all be at forty-two, twenty-one, or they could all be at forty-one dollars. If you're changing per the hours, I mean, it, I'm asking the question...
And we're asking, it was a straight unit rate. We'll do it that way.
You, you know what? I, I, yeah, I, I understand Commissioner Cale's question very, very clear. Uh, we're, we're slightly, slightly increasing costs, and we're still going to say, do the same job we said we were doing to. I got it.
Nobody's explaining that to me. No offense, Melissa. I need to know how we're going to provide the same amount with the cuts we've had, paying one entity more money than the other, well, the second entity more money than the lowest entity. How do you provide the same amount of services unless there's a slush fund that I'm not aware of?
The, the, uh, there's no additional funding, uh, and there, there, there would be some, there would have to be some manipulation of the budget to stretch it out a little bit further based upon a higher unit rate. Why don't we, why don't I offer another alternative to the board? That is that we take the lowest unit rate
You give it to everybody.
from the, from their request of proposals. We apply that unit rate if they want to be able to be a service coordinator. And we do, and we see how it works out with the three contracts.
I think that's a marvelous question.
I seen Jerry had the light bulb above his head. He was thinking real hard. Are we allowed to do that, Jerry?
It's an RFP. We can do it every one. It's not a bid. It's a request for proposal. So as we come back, the lowest...
I think, if we do it across the board with all the people that have submitted proposals.
Correct. It should be legal because it's an RFP. We can negotiate an RFP.
You can go back with, and I think that's what Kathy was originally getting back. How do you go back to just one person? And that's why I wanted to distinguish originally, were they changing numbers? And she said, "No." But if you go back, you can go back to somebody that submits a proposal and say, "Can you do better?" But everybody has to have a fair and equal chance to do that.
Well, if we award based on the lowest hour, lowest unit rate and give that ability to the other vendors who are applying for our work, that should be legal because it's an RFP. Here's the number. If you want the work, you have to be at.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Can we put this on hold and give, uh, Melissa or whoever the opportunity to go back?
I'll, I'll withdraw my second. Do you withdraw your motion?
Well, I don't necessarily think, do you need to, I, I would suggest that you, you, you pass that as a resolution now. And if they don't want to be offended, they'll notify us. Let's just move on.
Okay, okay.
Okay? Uh, the, uh, again...
Restate the motion then.
Start over. Did you withdraw your original motion?
Well, nobody withdrew anything.
I did. I withdrew my second.
Okay, well...
I'll withdraw my first.
Okay.
And the motion being that we're awarding the bid based on the thirty-nine dollar and seventy cent per unit.
Thirty-nine, seventy-one.
Thirty-nine, seventy-one per unit. Go back out to the three bidders, because that's all we had. And those who want to participate at that amount of money will make a decision at that point. Is that legal, fair? You want to straighten that up? Am I okay on that?
Yes, yes. It, it's a baseline. You establish a baseline based upon the lowest submitted proposal, and you offer a contract to all three entities. Very acceptable. And I think that that keeps everybody in the game. But what they understand, it will still be looking at consolidation after this year.
Yeah, because I'm sure next cuts...
Depending on future cuts.
Well, there's an eight billion dollar shortfall in the state budget, so I'm sure this is going to take a major hit, even though it's one of my favorite programs.
I'll second the motion.
It's a good compromise.
Excellent. That's why you get paid three bucks.
When?
Any further discussion?
(laughing)
Ms. Cale?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your discussion. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you for all your hard work. We changed it all in ten minutes.
Yeah, let's finish up the agenda.
Finish the agenda.
Under Community Development, accept the recommendation of Lorraine County Recycling Loan Fund. Oversight committee is determined at June twenty-second meeting and approving a recycling RLF submitted by Greenfield Solar North Ridgeville. Overland amount of fifty thousand for the purchase of recycling materials we use in solar energy systems.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes. Greenfield Solar is someone we worked with for the past year. They stayed in Lorraine County. They originally in North Ridgeville, expanded their operations to Oberlin. This is just the start. They're employing twenty-five people now and hope by 2012 to be up to two hundred employees.
Awesome.
Also, the Solid Waste Revolving Loan Committee indicated that they're very anxious to continue to do additional business with Greenfield Solar. And we're going to be looking at that solid waste revolving loan to change it just from a recycling content material type loan program more into a sustainability loan program so that we can support more. Funny part was, we couldn't loan Greenfield Solar money to pursue development of solar technology. Or we could loan them money to build something, recycle the aluminum.
Correct.
And it, and it, things have evolved so much since we put that loan fund together that we need to go back and we look at the mission statement of that loan. So we'll be, we'll be doing that in the very near future.
And did not Greenfield Solar?
Won an award at the Growth Partnership the other day.
Yes.
Yes, at the Team Neo Awards on Wednesday night.
Yeah, I figured one of you guys was going to talk about this at the, in your-
We can do it now, but-
Well, it's right in conjunction with, so I think that's great. And I'll just mark off item number two.
I'm sure Blair and I attended the Team Neo Awards in Akron on Wednesday night, I think, last week. Lorraine County Growth Partnership won an award in conjunction with Greenfield Solar, the city of North Ridgeville, the city of Oberlin.
Temeone County.
Team Lorraine County, the Chamber of Commerce. Am I missing anybody?
I think we, I think we got the whole umbrella.
Okay. On the retaining Greenfield Solar in Lorraine County and locating their new facility in Oberlin.
Yes, good for all of us.
And congratulations to Roy Church-
Yes.
For getting the H. Peter Berg Award for regional thinking. Now I won't have a report to do.
Yeah, I, nor would I. And the, that said, while you're mentioning it, I know we're delaying the meeting, but it was a great thrill to be there for Lorraine County that night. There were six hundred and fifty people in attendance. I think about two hundred and fifty or three hundred of them from Lorraine County.
Six hundred from Lorraine County, right down.
We were honored with being a finalist in three categories, which meant we were a winner, runner-up in three different categories, and selected as the very best in one of those categories out of several different categories. That really says that Lorraine County is positioned very, very strongly with regard to all of the economic development going on in Northeast Ohio. And not to mention that our own Roy Church received a very prestigious leadership award for Northeast Ohio, recognizing his contribution to the community over the last several years. The ruckus in the room from Lorraine County was, was very hard to quell. And also, we decided that the plus in the Cleveland plus means people love us over in Lorraine County.
So maybe they can include us in their plus from now on.
So it was Lorraine County's night. I did say that.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cale?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Authorized Purchase Service Agreement with Common Ground Oberlin to provide personal development training classes to OWF recipients in state fiscal year eleven, effective July first, two thousand and ten through June thirty, two thousand and eleven, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. Authorized director to execute amend for changes in programming, content, increase value on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approved as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Cale?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized payment of County General Fund mandated share of Job and Family clients with Ohio Revised Code fifty-one oh one sixteen through one sixty-one for the period July first, two thousand and ten through June thirty, two thousand and eleven, in the amount of one million, eighty-four thousand, fifteen dollars. Minimum five percent of the state of Ohio certified amount of county share of one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixteen for state fiscal year eleven to general fund public assistance grant line items.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cale?
Aye.
Under the engineer instructed clerk to advertise bids for the surplus property located at the corner of Butternut Ridge Road and In-N-Out Hollow Road, Carolla Township, further known as parcel ten, zero, 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 seven, nine hundred, zero, zero, one. Notice to be on the chronicle on July second, ninth, sixteenth and twenty-third, and open at two P.M. on July thirtieth.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Cale?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Now presentation, or you want to continue?
Yeah, presentation.
That's fine.
Okay.
We'll have a presentation on the stormwater now? I don't know who's coming in first, or-
I want to apologize to the Mayors and Managers Association for not being timely. And recognizing you here this morning, Mayor Hunter.
They're all government officials.
President, well, yes, but still, I mean, we invited you to come here at nine forty-five. We did not realize that we were going to have such a timely discussion on, so we thank you for enduring us. You brought us more reading material? Welcome, Sharra Davis from Public Services Institute, and Mayor Krasenko from Lorraine, Mayor Hunter from Sheffield Village, Mayor Taylor from Amherst. You're behind Krasenko. I got Mayor Zuber from Avon Lake. Thank you. I couldn't, you were sitting right behind Mayor Krasenko. City Manager Norenberg from Oberlin. And Linda Bales representing the Grafton Village, Nancy Fani from Solid, from Soil and Water Conservation, Ken Carney, our county engineer. Who have I missed? I'm sorry. Someone, Virginia Haynes from the Alliance.
Mayor Gerlock here also.
Oh, John Piscura, Mayor Sheffield Lake. Good morning.
I saw Gil back there, too.
Where, I saw, yeah. Where is he?
He stepped out.
Well, if you step out during introductions, you're not here.
Ron Swinney's here.
Do I know him? Is he the mayor or something?
The floor is yours, the mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the commissioners allowing the Mayor's Managers Council to come this morning to talk about stormwater and stormwater implementation of a study that was paid for through a state grant with the help of the Alliance. Thank you, Betty, and, and supporting that, and PSI for helping to put the study together. We come here today to ask the commissioners to make sure that when we're implementing the parts of this study, that the Mayor's Managers Council remain a part of that. Gave you a copy of the study, and also gave you a copy of the executive summary. The purpose of the study, the study was objective to understand and extend the nature of the current conditions within Lorraine County on stormwater. Analyze local government spending relating to stormwater management, identify alternative government or financial offers for options for coordinating or collaborating on the approach to stormwater control, identifying the best management practice to inform or set possibilities of a solution for stormwater within Lorraine County, developing a stormwater management plan with the stakeholders' support to identify possible implementation or information that we can do in implementing a practice to control stormwater. This Stormwater Committee has been working, the Mayor's Manager Council for over two years, has been working on trying to control stormwater. It doesn't have a geographical boundary. It doesn't have a political boundary. Water's going to go where it wants to go. It's going to, it's nature's way of handling things. We've done a poor job nationwide and here in Lorraine County of controlling stormwater and stormwater runoff. One of our latest things was to meet with other avenues or counties that have implemented stormwater regional control. We had a meeting back on January the twelfth of two thousand and ten with government officials and stakeholders in Lorraine County, with Lake County, people in Summit Counties that have already started the process of implementing something in regard to regional stormwater. The efforts to manage stormwater are very frustrating, very fragmented throughout our county and governments across the county. While water crosses boundaries political otherwise, there's no single form or structure for the sixteen municipalities, villages and eighteen townships and county government to collaborate, communicate, plan, problem solve, and manage related to stormwater implementation. Overall, local management, local governments surveys revealed that very little was done proactively by local governments to manage stormwater due to the shrinking resources. In two thousand and eight alone, only two point six million dollars was spent on stormwater control operations, capital projects and other projects by local managers collectively in the county. Some communities collected stormwater fees while others did not result in implementing a significant inadequate control for the water. Two municipalities currently have stormwater fees in effect of two dollars, and once has four dollars and eighty-five cents an average household. Once the local governments participate in the stormwater utility fee will go in effect soon. Four other localities will have a stormwater consideration. Additionally, the Lorraine County Engineers has introduced and instructed a stormwater fee of a dollar and a half for a household for unincorporated areas of the county. Interstructure limitations are evident. No single resource of information exits, exists relative to stormwater. Our capacity's county-wide. Some counties have better information about stormwaters than others. Like stormwaters, there's no master plan or map for the county. Currently exists or has been updated for the county. In nineteen ninety-nine, a master drainage plan for Lorraine County was conducted by the County Engineers Office and K&amp;M Associates, identifying possible location for retention, detention basins in northern portions of the county. However, the work has not been updated, and many of the prospective locations have now been since developed. Lorraine County is beginning to inventory maps and stormwater management capacities in EPA regulations since these implementations lines are not decided until two thousand and fourteen. Lake and Summit County is already way ahead of us in trying to do something with Stormwater Drainage District under the Ohio Revised Code of sixty-one seventeen. Lake County's programs are voluntary for local governments, so they can, communities can not be forced to participate. However, over time, many local cities, villages and townships recognize the value of collaborative effort that can produce and minimize stormwater. What we're talking about today, and I gave you the summary here, instead of going through the whole thing, if you look at page seven of the summary, implementing a plan for Lorraine County. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We just want to work with you and collaborate. We want to make sure that there's a participation by the mayors and managers of Lorraine County in what happens with stormwater and how it's ran. We want to make sure the County Engineers Office is involved. We don't need to put a bureaucracy in place that we already have competent engineers and etc. to can work with us. We just want to work together to try to establish the level of participation for all local governments, townships, villages, municipalities, to ensure a flexible option tailored to the needs of each local government built on the county, Lake County experience. We have many, many problems with stormwater throughout the county. In nineteen eighty-three, the Lorraine County Commissioners passed eighty-three, four thirty-three, established in the Lorraine County sewer districts by the Lorraine County Commissioners. The boundaries of, where consolidated district involve those areas which had already been had water supply and sewer removal necessary, such as townships. This section created a board with at least one representative from the county, cities and townships. The strategy is to hire an engineer to oversee the district activities and report to the county commissioners. Use of district to address a fragment and duplicating of staff and administration the cost of the activities will be reduced. We feel that we're here today, the mayors and managers want to have a, be a shareholder with you in resolving this stormwater problem. That's why Mayor Taylor, Mayor Zuber, Mayor Krasenko, Mayor Gerlock, City Manager Eric Norberg, Mayor John Piscura, Urka Treasurer Linda Bales, and myself are here today to tell you that behalf of the Lorraine County Mayors and Managers Association, we want to be a shareholder in resolving this problem. We want to make sure that a panel is set up that when implementation of trying to handle reserve stormwater problems, that we have participation and an active voice in those decisions. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer it, and I yield the floor to any of my mayors and managers that would like to make any comments.
Anybody want to comment in addition to what Mayor Hunter has said?
Do you have any questions? I know I gave you the report today in a supplement. Please take the time to read it. Our Mayor's Managers Group meets monthly, and I'm very proud of the work that they do in trying to do things together for the betterment of all of Lorraine County citizens. We've cooperated a lot over the last two years, and I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your leadership, Mayor Hunter. City Manager Norenberg.
Thank you. I, I just want to echo a lot of what Mayor Hunter just said. He gave a great overview of the report. The study has been ongoing. And in addition to the mayors and myself who have participated in the, in the effort, in the planning, experts from PSI, experts from different agencies at the county have been involved as well. So this has been a truly collaborative and participative process. And the earlier discussions this morning have pointed out both the need to look at the fiscal situation for the county and various agencies in the county, as well as the cities, townships and villages that are involved in addressing stormwater management. Just like was mentioned earlier, budget cuts and belt tightening need to be thought about for the future. And a collaborative approach to stormwater management that embraces incorporate areas and unincorporate areas and looks at this from a countywide standpoint, I think is going to be essential to being more efficient as we address this problem for the years to come. And I think this is an opportunity, as Mr. Cordez mentioned earlier, we have great partnerships on economic development, award-winning partnerships on economic development that cross governmental boundaries in this county. We can duplicate and reflect that, that level of collaboration in this issue as well. So I would urge the commissioners to look particularly at the implementation steps that Mayor Hunter drew your attention to, and we'd like to sit down and work with you to begin implementing this plan. So I think it's a great thing to move forward with.
Thank you. City Manager Norenberg.
Have you given a copy of this to the engineer as well?
Sure, yes, I did. Mr. Carney has been very, very helpful to our group and to the mayors of Lorraine County. We appreciate the job he does for Lorraine County. He's been very, very big help to us in Sheffield Village and across the county. And that's why we want the county engineer involved in whatever plan there is to put this forth. We want to be very proactive about the stormwater issue. We also want to work with everybody in understanding that this is everybody's problems, not just us and not just one group. We can do it together if we all pull together.
Any comments, Mr. Carney? No, nothing on it? Don't miss your time on TV.
Before he gets up here, I'd just like to thank the commissioners for, and the county engineer for the great work that's going on in Sheffield Village with the widening of six-eleven. It would have happened without the Engineers Department and the county engineers. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mayor Hunter.
Thank you, John. It's pretty obvious we all have to get together. And with the help of the managers and mayor's associations and monthly meetings that's been happening, geographical boundaries, lay of the land, no, no political subdivisions honor that. Obviously, for people up north, have to take the water from the people down south. And that's Ohio Drainage Law, about a hundred and twenty years old. So it's obvious it needs to be done. And I'd like to see some collabora, collaboration between all the communities. And not only the type of construction that needs to be done, has to be uniform, the design criteria. We can't have a city have a five-year storm design and another city have a twenty-five. We have that available to them. We've done that for years. I, I love retention, quite frankly. I think we maintain twenty-six retention basins presently. And every time, there's a development that keeps growing and growing. That's a good solution, but it takes land to do that. We only usually end up having those available to us when a developer builds. So we take his land. We build retention. He builds retention. And then we operate and maintain as if nothing has been developed. It rained, the quantity of water receiving or running off of that property as if it was two hundred years ago. So that's the goal. So that's the goal. And we may even go a little farther and retain more than that to catch up on what hasn't been done in the last 50 years, similar to Westlake. So I appreciate John asking me to come up and elaborate on it. I thank all the mayors and managers on their tremendous help they've done and PSI and Shar Davis and the entire group that has accomplished what they have in a short period of time. I still haven't heard of anyone who won that $100,000.
Yeah? What, at the Eagles? No.
No, 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 no. No, fishing government.
I don't know who won that one.
Okay, War, you blew that one.
Youngstown, Mahone County won one, Cuyahoga won one.
Wasn't us.
And Stark the other possibly? There were three of them. Yeah, we finished fifth, I believe.
GPS won maybe?
I don't remember which one.
Just look for money.
There were three that were awarded and we were fourth or fifth.
Next time.
Next time.
All right. Thanks for listening.
We were going to be implementing the $9.50 stormwater management fee. Are the mayors, and that's only in the unincorporated areas, so are you anticipating anything in the cities and villages as far as a fee?
The, actually the committee match, the stormwater committee that we started putting together and Jerry was there also. I'm not really sure that, while we're trying to get caught up with the mayors, I have to give them that kind of credit, that we're as far along as they are, but we are trying to structurally, you know, get ourselves together with a plan so that we can actually sit down as partners, as Eric said, and collaborate with them. Right now, we don't, we just don't have a good plan and that's what we were working on the last time we met. There was, how many people were at the meeting, would you say, Jerry? 10, 12? 10, 12, I'd say. So we'll be getting with them pretty quick.
It's going to take money to control the water.
We just, we just want to sit down and implement a plan. There's, how we finance and everything is all decided in what kind of plan we put together. We've done the research. We've had the Lorraine County Park System. We've had all the municipalities involved. We've had the county. We've had the engineering department. We've met with other people that have already invented the wheel and had their problems in implementing theirs. We've had the college involved and PSI has been a great help to us and Shar Davis. We just want to sit down, be a part of putting it together so there's no sense of doing duplicate service or doing duplicate things together or duplicate financing of it and give every municipality the right to have to get in or out as they see fit to meet their needs within their area. I would like to recognize that we have Engineer Robert Coffe here from Avon. Jim Smith couldn't make it this morning, but he had Robert come here himself. Also Mayor Beulen from Vermillion is running late. She'll be here. And we also had Ron Schmidt from South Amherst that planned to be here today and was unable of cause of sickness. So again, thank you for your time and effort and take time to read this. We want to sit down with you. We want to implement it. We want to be a stakeholder in it though. Thank you.
Mr. Norberg, you had something further?
Just to chime in on the answer to the question about the fee, if you refer back to page seven in the executive summary, one of the things that would need to be talked about right from the very beginning is kind of the structure of what level of services would be provided to each of the municipalities and villages and it's anticipated if we do follow the model similar to Lake County that there'd be a tiered level of two or three or four choices of opting in for that and municipalities would have the option to opt in at a level that makes sense for their community and then the fee would be implemented in that community to help support the work of the countywide process. And so we think it makes sense to approach that. I think most of the mayors have been supportive of then bringing to their city councils the potential for joining at the level that makes sense for their community and being part of the fee structure that would support the collaborative program. So I think we all look forward to working with county administration and the county engineer to sit down and look at the next steps towards implementation.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things, every time we do something good, it pushes more stuff to you guys. So, you know, the retention issue that Mr. Carney was talking about is something we've been looking at because getting our ditches cleaned and doing all that work out there just complicates the situation more fully in the cities.
Right. Well, one of the great things about the research that's been done and the options that are listed in the more detailed portion of the report is that there are things beyond the very costly ditches and detention areas. There are things that individual homeowners can do such as rain barrels and onsite retention and more of that can be done, I think, less costly to governments, whether it's at the county level or the local level. And so I think we need to look at this from the very point that the rain hits the roof all the way through to where it needs to be detained and ultimately discharged into the tributaries that drain the water for our county. So it's really a comprehensive packet of information and program that we've given you.
Thank you. Shar Davis, you have worked with this group. You were the facilitator for the grant that we received. Do you have comments that you would like to make to the board?
Thank you, Commissioner Blair. Just briefly, I think Mayor Hunter, Mayor Norberg have done an excellent job of kind of providing the overview of the initial steps for that implementation plan. I'd just like to commend everybody in this county that's been a part of this work. The county commissioners, the Community Alliance, the Mayors and Managers Association, Lorraine County Metro Parks, Lorraine County Soil and Water Conservation, many, many different organizations. It's a complex issue. Nobody's been able to, you know, completely figure this out in all of Ohio and probably throughout the United States, but, you know, I think that we have come forth after really doing some digging into this area with an implementation plan and most important, it's a governance structure. It recommends a new governance structure that, you know, provides some opportunities and some options, as City Manager Norberg was saying, for the municipalities to opt in. You know, I think that gives you your best set of options for collaboration actually occurring because it is an opt-in, opt-out. There are various levels of participation that would be proposed. You know, none of those distinct levels of participation have been determined at this point. Again, it would be up to the county commissioners under the Lake County model to really establish that governance structure and put those details around all of that to move this forward. So again, I thank everybody. I think it's been a wonderful example of collaboration just in the two years that we've been working through this effort, you know, and not to mention just in Lorraine County, but with Lake County, with Summit County. I mean, it's been a good opportunity to work with some neighboring communities and learn from each other in terms of where we're all at. I have to tell you, I don't even think I've shared with the mayors yet, but Summit County, the Summit County engineer has actually contacted us and remember when we did the January event and brought their engineers in, you know, one of the things that he was extraordinarily impressed with from Lorraine County is the active participation that we had from our county commissioners, from county government, from our municipalities, townships, and all of those other organizations at that event. And he said to us, you know, if we convene something like that, we'd never get that kind of participation. Can PSI come help us with that convening function? And we said, you know, we'd be happy to. You know, and there's some other things that we learned from Summit County. So, you know, that's, that's the accomplishment here is we've collectively learned together and put together a plan to actually move some things forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Shar. And just as a note for anybody's interest, the August meeting of the alliance topic for discussion is stormwater. In January, the executive committee got together and planned out our year and so we've been thinking about it all this time, so we've got a lot to talk about. Anyone else want to comment on stormwater? Thank you all for coming this morning. We appreciate seeing the mayors here. We don't always see you because you're busy doing your other stuff. Yes, and I know you're here, Mayor Gurelock. I did not acknowledge you, but, and thank you for coming again. That's two days this week he's been at the administration building. Thank you, Mayor Gurelock. Man clerk, where are we?
Mr. Cortez.
Okay.
Yield.
Good.
Mr. Ennis.
I have one issue of threatened litigation that I would like to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioner's report.
Since we have 11 o'clock conference call, I'm going to just wish everybody a very safe and happy Fourth of July weekend.
Pass me, I did my report.
I have two items I just want to tell you about. On June 25th...
Hey, guys, we're still having a meeting. Hello?
You may be done what we're not.
We're still having a meeting.
Thank you. On June 25th, Ted and I were at the Lorraine Port Authority's groundbreaking for their 3.3 million ERA project chosen by ODOT and the state. This exciting economic development project is in conjunction with the Corps of Engineers and is for the use of a 58-acre dyke disposal site into a regional destination facility to enhance the lakerie waterfront. On behalf of this board, I extended thanks to all the participants and especially Governor Strickland noting that members of the West Shore commuter rail task force look forward to becoming an important part of this regional economic development initiative. And the governor's right up front when I said that and I smiled and looked right at him. And secondly, yesterday, Lorraine County Community, at Lorraine County Community College, there was hosted an EDA Economic Development Initiative, Community Economic Adjustment Program. It's a bunch of terminologies for how do you get money from the federal and state agencies and it was hosted by the Levin College of Urban Affairs at Cleveland State University. This is the second time I've been to one of their initiatives. I've furnished through my administrative assistant a listing of all the information that they provided to us and our new chief person in community development, Patrick Metzger, has a copy of that. So if you have information that you would like to get from Patrick, he'll be happy to share it with you and maybe we'll get some more dollars for Lorraine County. Thank you.
Before, I do want to just remind everybody that we're still taking donations for our troops overseas. Here at the administration building, there's other locations that I'm going to give this to Hal, so it'll be up on the screen for everybody to see where you can bring those items. And that's through July 15th.
Commissioner's Retirement Proclamation of Patty Greenleaf at Job and Families, four correspondents.
Move the reading to wave.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody here who wants to talk, who hasn't had a chance? I move, hurry. Boy, you just almost missed your opportunity. Run.
Hi, I'm Jim Latham. I'm the Director of Operations for Greenfield Solar and I just want to extend thanks to the commissioners, Team Lorraine County, the community of Oberlin, and the community of North Ridgeville for all the support you guys have given us.
Can I ask while you're at the podium, if you explain what your pilot program's going to be that you're involved with and where it's at and what it's going to do for our residents? Since we talked about loans and I know the city of Oberlin came with a big loan and we did that through the all revolving loan fund, so it's a really good collaboration of funding source to make this happen, but we've never really get the word out very well on that.
So you'd like to know a little about Greenfield Solar?
Yeah, because this is going to be broadcast and so the folks that are watching probably won't have any idea what we've all been talking about and excited about. And I'm talking about your actual pilot program where you're putting the...
Sure. I think that the funds that we're going to use here are going to support the pilot program that we're doing with Cleveland Public Power at the greenhouse site right off of Rockefeller, or Martin Luther King Boulevard in Cleveland. And I think that when that is completed in the fall, there'll be a lot of public acknowledgement of that, of that.
And you need that pilot program to be able to continue forward.
It's a stepping stone, right?
To demonstrate the newer technology.
That's right.
Now, you're going to power the whole or part of the greenhouse?
The power, again, it's a pilot program. CPP is just going to take that power and put it on the grid, so it doesn't have any specific use, but they will be monitoring how much energy it's producing. And another unique aspect with our units is that they generate thermal energy. We produce hot water and they'll be using the hot water to heat the greenhouse there.
And could you let us know how many jobs you anticipated creating through this initiative?
As it was stated, we have 25 employees now and over the next two or three years, we look to increase that to 200. And right now, I'm looking for people. I interviewed people yesterday. I'll be interviewing people tomorrow. Hopefully, we're going to hire a couple of people next week, so we're definitely going down that path.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Sometimes the residents don't really, I don't know, we don't communicate or they don't hear about, you know, all these initiatives. So, you know, the job creation and grow your own here in Lorraine County has been a big, big thing for us and you guys are a success story and, you know, coming together with a couple of different organizations and, you know, if you can get out there and get those 200 jobs, that'll be, that'll support everything we've been doing.
Yeah, that's my goal.
Fine job, Jim.
Thank you very much for coming.
Tell Bernie and Neil I said hello.
I'll do that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by our administrator and assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page and click on View Agenda for a printable
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807 when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that pass through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge and the community... and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskyville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4th, 1817. The Village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Aleria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Aleria and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Aleria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation and in the winter of 1817 moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace and in fact was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The County Fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826, and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LaGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825 established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name LaGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LaGrange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village also incorporated as LaGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcocks, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester's center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60 and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Spansky? We were going to cross the street the other day and we remembered, look left, look right, look left." So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, "Oh, ooh." And we get up there and we tell them and we even give them some trick questions, you know? We'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast and we can run." And of course, they're very enthusiastic and, "No, we shouldn't do this." So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look. They should walk and continue to look both ways because it's not safe and they could fall. They could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large and you're talking in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever. It's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no! Those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely. Like, don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda. And they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Osmo!
What's up, Osmo? How's it going?
Osmo, this is Michael.
Michael?
This is Osmo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Osmo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming!
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Osmo as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Osmo does the same thing and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross because a lot of children at schools have parked cars. He goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing. Not only from the children, we have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight. If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to... If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
I think that it was good because I didn't let you have the five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection. What happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Osmo?" And he stops and he thinks and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want. We can take a chance and run across the road. And I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs. We still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.